Ah, there we go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming and dialing in. This is the Wasted Streets Scene Committee. Welcome to everybody here. I will just go around the room with introductions first. I'm councillor Joe Otten, Chair of the Committee, and if we go around the room with members.
Tim Huggan, councillor for Crooks and Crosspool.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood.
councillor Alexi Diamond, Green Party spokesperson and councillor for Cletus Valley.
Paul Taupin, Green councillor for Cletus Valley.
Mike Chaplin, Saudi councillor and deputy chair of this committee.
councillor Nabil Malana, councillor for Park in Aberton.
Janet Riddler, Labour councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
councillor Mark Jones, Labour councillor for Boon Creek Ward.
Thank you. And officers on the top table?
Rachel Appleyard from Democratic Services.
Sarah Bennet from Legal Services.
We should add, director of streets in regulation.
Thank you. So the meeting today is open to the public. We have one question from a member of the public, no petitions. Can I request that mobile telephones and other such devices are switched to silent? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is any emergency evacuation, please take instruction from town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Item two is apologies for absence. We are all here, so I guess there are no apologies. Item three, exclusion of public and press. There is none today. All the items on the agenda are public. Item four, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? I'll take that as a no. Item five is minutes of the last meeting. This is on page nine of your agenda pack. Are there any queries on that, or can we agree them as a correct record? I'll give you a moment. You don't have time to read them now, however, so I think on that basis, I propose we agree those as a correct record. Is that agreed?
Agreed, Chair.
Okay. Item six, public questions and petitions. We have a question from Bridget Ingle. Would you like to come to the desk and press the button on the microphone that will... has a little face and a sound coming out of the mouth?
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. The environmental volunteer strategy is a lot of warm words with no real measurable commitments or new ideas. Even the very modest idea of a part-time post to work with volunteers is not actually offered as a decision for the committee to make. Instead, it's left for some unknown persons to further consider or maybe refer to another committee. It's nearly 20 years since Sheffield City Council last entered the Britain in Bloom competition. As a competition, it inspires community groups to make positive changes to their local environment through horticultural, environmental and community action. While the proposed volunteer strategy is a step forward, it lacks direction, and that is because there is no overall council strategy. There is no way of evaluating progress for anyone involved. I'm asking the council to lead by example and consider re-entering the Britain in Bloom competition. It will inspire neighbourhoods, community groups and residents in Sheffield to do the same. It gives everyone involved a structure to work to, from the council to individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. So Sheffield, we're very proud that we won the large city in 2008, but we've not since then. The budget for spending on civic floral colour has been completely lost due to financial savings, and without this, we would struggle to compete in the national awards. Sheffield isn't alone in this. If you look at the current shortlist, which I'll come to in a moment, for 2023, it has very few big cities. However, as part of the volunteering strategy and work underway already with parks, we are actively encouraging more Friends groups to enter in Yorkshire in Bloom, which is at www.yorkshireinbloom.co.uk. We would also like to bring back the Lord Mayor's Awards, which were successful in encouraging communities to address their local areas and then work with partners and community groups, such as Sheffield Bead and Hillsborough together, to see what could be done in and around street dressing and floral colour. A key part of the strategy is to create a post, as you alluded to, so this becomes somebody's responsibility to really enable our communities identify funding and to make things like this happen. So, I mean, the list... The shortlist for the current Britain in Bloom is Derry, Derry City, Strabane, Newcastle under line, Staffordshire, Old Bid, Wigston in Leicestershire, Royal Tunbridge Wells in Kent, Aberdeen Communities together, Aberdeenshire, London Borough of Tower Hamlets, London. That's, you know, there's not a lot of, you know, you say, in terms of peer cities, there's not a lot of presence in there. I'll add to that, and this is the prepared answer, but as you specifically referred to the post in your preamble, I mean, this has been a matter of discussion with members and officers cross-party. We are optimistic that we will find the revenue for that, but to actually appoint it would be a budget decision, which we'd have to identify within this committee or saving somewhere else to make that as an outright decision. But I think there is will to find a solution to make that happen. The funding for the environmental coordinator post this year was one-off. It was a one-off measure, and there wasn't a similar one-off proposal for next year's budget. So that's what we've got to try and find a way to work that through. So that's why, that's kind of why we are where we are. Thank you for your question. The next item on the agenda is the work programme. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair. The work programme sets out all the items due to be considered by the committee, and it's owned and driven by the committee. The committee hasn't received any referrals since the last meeting. Appendix Part One of the report, which is page 28 of the pack, that outlines the changes to the work programme since the last meeting. Some items have been added, including two reports being received today. That's the amendments to the Hackney carriage vehicle policy and the review of energy tariffs for market traders. Six reports have been moved to meetings in the 23/24 schedule, and if you have a look in the appendix, these are highlighted for clarity. Appendix One Part Three, which is on 29 of the pack, shows the planned items for future meetings of the committee. So the recommendations are that the work programme, Appendix One, be agreed, including additions and amendments that are identified, and that the committee give consideration to any further issues to be explored by officers for inclusion in the next work programme report, for potential addition to the work programme. And I'll hand over to officers to make any comments and answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I mean, I have a comment on the work programme that, obviously, we've had since the last meeting, the report of the LowCock Inquiry, that has made recommendations to the council, some which appear to fall under the remit of this committee. There's specifically the recommendation that we do more to support the work of the Independent Tree Partnership, which, you know, we accept. I understand everybody in the council accepts that recommendation. And also to consider whether we have the skills to manage the AMI contract effectively. And I think that's also, obviously, we accept that. I think that's accepted across the whole council. As far as the Wasted Streets Scene Committee is concerned, whether those ultimately fall to us or whether they're taken on elsewhere in strategic resources or elsewhere remains to be seen, but I hope the will, wherever it lands, I hope the will is there. I'll come to in a moment, Mark. I do think members of the council and members of the public might reflect on whether members found to have misled the publics and the courts and the tree forum are the right members to be taking that forward. Members who are found to have driven forward a process of pressing ahead with tree felling despite AMI wishing to compromise and wishing to pause, members found to have pressured the police into arresting more civic-minded pensioners when perhaps they should have been arresting fewer civic-minded pensioners are the right people to take that forward. That's something for members to...
Point of order.
In a moment, that is something for members to reflect on and for members of the public to reflect on. Thank you. Yes, Mark was first, and I'll come to you, Mike. It is a point of order, in which case, I mean, I'll let you in first, yeah.
Chair, I didn't think it was appropriate to give that outline because it is an outline that is slanted in one particular way. There is no mention of officers or other parties driving the... I don't mean parties in the political sense either, in driving forward the Streets Ahead Programme for road renewal, which involved the cutting down of trees. There are a number of councillors who were acting in good faith and didn't realise that they were being undermined by officers who have now left this authority. I just wanted that on record, Chair.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mike. I mean, I wouldn't, as a matter of policy, criticise individual offices in an open forum because that's not within the code of conduct for members, but, yeah, your point has been made. Mark?
Slightly different one. Obviously, we don't know who's going to be sat on this committee next year. It depends upon the makeup of it, and also depends upon how the governance review goes on and what, as you and I have sat on that thing, we know that there would be recommendations that we'd like to see in terms of the workload that's put on the committees. One thing I would like to say is, and it's not a direct criticism, it's just when officers are writing the suggestions of things that we have to do because of the timelines and everything else, that shouldn't be primacy above the wishes of elected members in terms of the work programme. So though I'd like officers to chair the work programme, I'd like for an opportunity for, in closed session, for all members on this committee, whoever they may be, to sit down, look at that work programme and also make sure that their own elements go in there, so that it remains a member-led agenda. It's just that kind of, otherwise we risk becoming just nothing more than procedural elements. So I'd like to make sure that we get a political steer on the agenda going forward.
Yeah, no, I quite agree, Mark. So I see your hands. I'll respond to that. Yes, I think we've had this discussion of governance, haven't we, that it would be useful at the beginning of the civic year to have a session with members of the committee, or whatever committees exist, to think about the work programme. It is in danger of being nodded through at the meetings, when really, this point of the meeting is members' opportunity to make sure the work programme is shaped how we wish it to be. So I think that's all. Tim, and then Alexi.
Yeah, one of the suggestions I gave to the, on the governance review was that, basically, with the work programme, that we have a councillor name attached to it, and we do it, you know, in proportion to the committee, so the councillor is, you know, in the term of rapporteur for that committee, for that committee on that particular item in the work programme. And then it's up to that councillor how they then bring other councillors, if they want to make it cross-party, or if they want to push it forward all by themselves, which obviously has its own drawbacks when it comes to committee. And then, basically, there's some ownership within committee members, within a committee member on particular items of the work programme that they would want to help drive forward, and that would then give some impact back into the officers and give some empowerment to councillors that then can feed back to the chairs, vice-chairs, et cetera, of the committees on what they do. Because I think that's a way forward, because we sit here, we look at the work programme, oh, let's have a look when it's been pushed back, but if there's a councillor name to it, then they're pushing for it to come to the committee at the appropriate time with their feedback and who are, what are the councillors on the committee they've involved, and then it empowers us as councillors, but it also means that the officers feel they've got a councillor that will be pushing them to make sure that an item comes forward at the appropriate time.
Alexi?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I do think, looking at the work plan, it is regrettable that six items have been moved at really short notice, and it makes the work that we do much less accessible to the public because they're not certain of what's coming up. You know, they should have some prior notice, and they've got three new items and six items moved, so that's quite difficult. And I do understand that there is what could be a valid reason. Each item has been moved for an individual reason. However, I do especially regret that there is no, even though we've been talking about it since the beginning of the year, that we've had no review of parking enforcement and parking policy, because it is a serious issue in Sheffield. We have really dangerous roads here. We have more, double the number of children under 15 being seriously injured or killed on Sheffield roads when compared to other core cities, and that's because we're failing to address... Well, one of the reasons is failing to address dangerous parking, particularly around schools, but also other places like in the city centre, Abdael Road, Exell Road. Like Exell Road, I think, is the most dangerous road in South Yorkshire. I'm not sure. I think that's right. So, I mean, another thing, you brought up the governance review, Tim and Mark. I think really that parking and transport need to be in the same committee, because when looking at this in the, in our task and finish group, we found that we couldn't do anything pretty much without having somebody from Transport there. So I think that is a situation that needs to be changed and that we need to deal with some of these issues urgently. Thank you.
I mean, I'll come to you second, Mike. I mean, thanks for that, Alexi. I mean, I did suggest at the governance committee workshop that we consider, basically, cutting up the TRC committee and having a single transport committee, which included transport and parking services and taxi licensing. The feeling in that working, and obviously there's a formal meeting to come, but the feeling in that workshop was that they didn't want to do anything too dramatic, and they wanted to make smaller changes than that, and they would consider smaller changes. So that seems to be where it sits at the moment. The, you know, my view is that we're agonising over this a bit, a little bit too much. In the past, portfolios have always been shuffled, more or less at the whim of the leader, and sometimes in quite dramatic ways. And I don't think that was necessarily the wrong thing to do, but because we're now discussing these things in committee, we're in danger of kind of designed by committee with all its faults. But that's where we are. So by all means, lobby your members on governance if you want to go to reopen the question for a more dramatic change to portfolios. Mike?
Chair, like councillor Alexi Diamond, I also share concerns about the number of reports that have had to be moved back, but I will make the qualifying comment that we do know that we have, we've had a key officer go on long-term sick with an unfortunate illness, and that will almost certainly have impacted on how much workload this committee can put through. I would make a plea for an additional report at a future date, and it may well be that I'll not be sat on committee when it does come before people, before councillors, and that's to look at our sports licensing arrangements and to have a report on that and where we are with it.
Yes, so safety at sports grounds. I mean, yes, I think that's a well-made point. Obviously, there's been an issue recently, well, both team stadiums, but in particular, following the Wednesday Newcastle game, there's been repercussions of that. I've got a meeting on Friday with Jill Furness MP, who's asked for an urgent meeting on that point, just to discuss what's happened there and how we've ended up with the recommendations that we have.
We shall meet there, then, councillor.
And obviously, safety at sports grounds is something we have to take especially seriously, but obviously, at the same time, we do want to support our clubs. Is that everything for the work programme?
Is that something, then, Chair, that the committee would like us officers to consider, bringing, you know?
I think, yes. I think it's something that I'm happy to consider. I mean, the question, I suppose, is what exactly do you want? Are you asking for a report for information? Because normally, that wouldn't come to a full committee and use full committee decision-making time. It would come as a briefing, but it's sometimes briefings you do want to be held in public, so you want the people to see that you're, you know, that you want transparency of the process that has happened, I suppose, at this point. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, because this is the committee that is accountable, and I think, you know, we've gone a whole year and not had a public briefing on the safety of sports grounds, and I do think it would be useful that some attention is given to that.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Members are happy with that. Can we add that to the work programme? Thank you. Anything else on the work programme? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the amendments to the Hackney. Is or are the amendments to the Hackney carriage vehicle policy? Next items. Can we have singular headlines for items on the agenda in future to just make my, the grammar, my job of doing the grammar easier? Craig, would you like to introduce yourself and the report, please? Thank you.
What everybody? Thank you, Chair. Craig Harper, licensing officer. This is a very, very short report, just to seek approval over several amendments due to technical elements of Hackney carriage vehicle specification. Recommended that the proposed amendments are approved and come into force with immediate effect. So as members will be aware, the committee approved the Hackney carriage vehicle policy on the 15th of February, and that was subsequently implemented on the 1st of March. The policy sets the standard for Hackney carriage vehicles in Sheffield, and for the first time, it intended to permit the use of reloading Hackney carriage vehicles. However, we received some information subsequent to that hearing that several key aspects of this specification inadvertently prevented reloading vehicles from being ordinarily licensed. So following that feedback, we as a licensing service have made several amendments which will now enable reloading vehicles to be ordinarily licensed, as Hackney carriage vehicles, within the wider parameters of the policy itself. So there's several amendments that have been made. There are small amendments, so they include amendments to the body of the vehicle, the driver's compartment, the passenger compartment, the doors, door fittings and seats. So the details of the proposed amendments can be seen within the track changes at Appendix A. It does look like there's a huge amount of amendments, but it's because we've copied and pasted information, so it makes it look like there's more changes than there actually are. And there's also a copy without track changes at Appendix B for ease of reading by members. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I don't know if, I've not seen any hands yet. Can I just ask for clarity? The proposal, we're no longer requiring motion-operated door locks on the reloading vehicles. Can you explain why those aren't necessary?
Yeah, so in terms of automatic motion locks, which is part of the London-style cabs, which we're all familiar with, the reloading vehicles are built differently and therefore don't require motion locks, and they're therefore not fitted as standard when the vehicle's converted from what was probably a vehicle for disabled people to use into a Hackney carriage. These vehicles aren't built as a Hackney. They're converted from vans, so the motion locks aren't a requirement. The wheelchair passengers sit behind the other passengers in the vehicle in a separate compartment within a side-loading vehicle that actually sits within that cabin, that passenger cabin in the back. So that's why motion locks aren't needed on the reloading vehicles, which is why we've removed that particular requirement. The reloading vehicles are kind of akin to a private hire in terms of the passenger seating compartments. You have a row of three seats, which you would in a private hire, and those vehicles don't require motion locks either.
Okay, thank you for that. Any more questions or comments from members of the committee? Mike?
Chair, it's, thank you. It's just a comment in full support of this report and to thank officers for acting swiftly to bring it back at the following meeting so that this piece of licensing law was covered quickly.
Cliff?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a very brief question. How many makes and models of vehicle would then be able to fit this specification? Do you know?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I do know we've had one reloading vehicle licensed already that went to the licensing subcommittee. That was a VW Caddy, I believe. And we've also had several applications since the 15th of February for some Peugeot Horizons, I think they are. I think there's several additional vehicles to what we already have which will enable to be licensed in Sheffield.
Thank you. Mark?
In terms of the specifications that we've put forward for the ramps and the weights and what can be facilitated with that, how confident are you that we are now in a good place to deal with all the mobility aids that are out there at the moment? And how difficult will it be to increase the size of the ramp should that be needed?
What we've used is the reference standard of a wheelchair, which is defined in the Department for Transport's guidance that specifies weights, the weight of the actual wheelchair and the weights of passengers sitting in those wheelchairs. So we've used that kind of measurement as a reference within the policy. So we can be as confident as we can be, but there's always exceptions to the rule that the vehicles that will now be licensed do fit the reference wheelchair, the passengers within those wheelchairs.
So we're kind of thinking that we're appropriately specified. In terms of feedback from the drivers, so you said one's already been tested. In terms of feedback from the drivers, do they feel that those specifications allow them to help passengers access the taxi safely and to maintain their own personal safety?
Yeah, the information we've received back is that, and not just from the drivers, but some disabled passengers themselves, when we've held focus groups, is that many disabled passengers actually would prefer a reloading access vehicle because of the ease of getting into the vehicle and forward facing within that vehicle. We actually, one of the licensees brought one of these vehicles down to the office a couple of weeks ago, and we looked at and we talked us through how wheelchairs are loaded, the sizes, the weights and the ease in which it was to load. So we're getting positive comments back from the trade. I think there's always going to be some portions of the trade that prefer the traditional type cab, if you will, or the larger vehicles as opposed to this reloading one. So we might see in Sheffield different types of Hackney carriages working in and around Sheffield, but we haven't received any negative comments so far. As I said at the last hearing, we're always open to listening to people and making amendments where they're necessary.
Yeah, I'll just amplify that last comment. It's the nature of the traditional Hackney carriage, that you have a cab inside which you have to navigate to get to a seat, can be difficult for many people. So the fact that we have, we expect to have, you know, a variety of vehicles, a choice of vehicles, might make it easier, hopefully, for people with, yes, registered disability and mobility problems, but actually for lots of people who are, don't consider themselves disabled but still maybe struggle a little bit in a Hackney carriage. Are there any more comments on that? Okay, are we agreed with the recommendations? I'll take silence as a sentence of the meeting. That's agreed. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the environmental volunteering strategy. Yes, thank you, Craig. Ian and Beth, do you want to introduce yourselves and the reports? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ian Ashmore. I'm an environmental health practitioner, and I'm head of Environmental regs at the council.
And I'm Bethany Alsop, and I've been the project lead for the Streets Scene volunteering strategy.
So just a very brief background that you've got in the headlines of the paper. One of the first actions of this committee was to actually approve how we were going to spend the £500,000. That was a budget amendment for this financial year. And one of the things within that was a proposal that we needed to do more work with environmental volunteers. It was a bit of a blind spot. There was really, really strong work historically done with parks and Friends groups and also with many TARA's, but we'd had some feedback that other environmental groups found it difficult to find a way into the council and actually, you know, engage. So there was agreement that we would do a piece of work. We would firstly do research and find out what perceptions were from customers and groups, and then we would come up with a way forward. So Beth's going to take you through. I know people have read it, but we were just going to draw out just a couple of highlights, if that's okay, if there were, so Beth's going to do it.
So we're really fortunate in Sheffield to have an army of people who are passionate about the environment and who set out each day volunteering in their local streets and communities. So so far, we've identified 157 groups who are engaging environmental volunteering, and one of our biggest, Sheffield litter pickers, currently has 4,300 members. So you can really appreciate the scale of environmental volunteering in the city. So the strategy has been created from the feedback we've received from groups throughout this six-month project, and the recommendations in the strategy cover the key reoccurring issues that came up in these conversations when engaging with groups. So some of these key points within the strategy include improving our communication and creating more space for consultation with community groups. There's a real opportunity that I believe we've missed with this, because these people are really experts on the ground in their communities and for their local environments. We want to make our offer more accessible and inclusive. We appreciate this is not a one-size-fits-all approach, and we need to do more to promote equality in environmental volunteering and remove barriers. We want to improve the appreciation and recognition and support we give to volunteers and voluntary groups, improve and better utilise our partnerships with key stakeholders in the city to work together and reach shared environmental goals. And we want to ensure our processes put people at the heart of what we do and ensure joined-up working with colleagues across the council. at the heart of what we do and ensure joined-up working with colleagues across the council. So, with engaging with groups, we also tested out a number of recommendations early. This included the delivery of our very first volunteer recognition event, which tested new ways we can show greater appreciation for groups. 100 attendees joined us at this event from 48 different groups across the city, and although this event wasn't perfect, it provided vital feedback that can be used for future iterations of this event. In late October, we also expanded our litter picking equipment provision, which we provide with AME, to hosting equipment for collection in all 12 council-run libraries. This was aimed to remove barriers of access to equipment, and since then litter pickers have collected over 560 grabbers and over 7,000 bags from local libraries. And once these bags are filled, just so you can picture this amount of litter that's been collected, this amounts to just under four double-decker buses full of rubbish. And this is something that the admins of Sheffield Litter Pickers have been calling for for a great number of years, which has been a missed opportunity, which we've been able to harness because of this dedicated resource and through the production of the strategy. So, progress has been made on identifying and engaging with environmental volunteers and groups, and in changing our processes to make it easier for people to get involved. And if members are minded to approve the strategy and our commitment to sourcing a permanent role to carry on this work, we can continue to improve our relationships with environmental volunteers, enable more people to get involved and work with groups to deliver better environmental outcomes for Sheffield. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Beth. So, I saw Alexi and then Mark.
Thanks, Chair. So, yeah, I'd just like to thank you, Beth, for all the work that you've done on this, and Ian as well, and all the rest of the team. Had some really positive feedback from Sheffield Litter Pickers that I've spoken to. They said they were really happy with the positive relationships that have been formed with council and also AME officers, both during and prior to some of the time of the strategy being drawn up. I think one of the main progress like you've picked up on was the free litter picking kit that's now available in SCC-run libraries. And they said that all requests for collection of bags going more smoothly than before, so they've just added a few recommendations, additional recommendations, that perhaps provision of litter picking kit in libraries could be extended to include volunteer-run libraries as well as SCC libraries to make them even more accessible. And they did also pick up on that if your role is discontinued, then that would be a serious gap and we'd lose that progress that we've made, and we really need somebody who works for the council that's dedicated to this, which is why I'm really pleased that we managed to get that recommendation back in there. The final request was for more monitoring of Fix My Street by the AME and Sheffield City Council, but I do think they are monitoring that at the moment, so just a bit more work to be done. I think going forward, we just need to make sure that we enable more of our communities to be able to engage with environmental volunteering and make it more accessible. But, yeah, thank you very much for all the work you've done, and I hope we can be able to continue with a dedicated person. Thank you.
If you want to respond to that, otherwise I'll go to Mark.
Shall I just mention, in terms of the continuity, there always was some basic provision in terms of if there was an inquiry came in, we would, you know, root that. So, that will still, that will happen, but there is some work going on at the minute in the service in terms of providing some additional project support that we're exploring. We'll make sure the website is as informative as possible in the meantime, and we're going to try and minimise any gap. But as has been said, there is at the minute, there's no approved budget, you know, for an extra post, but what we've got to do is explore how we can do it, you know. We're not necessarily saying it's full-time, it could be that, but I think we're all agreed that without there being someone whose role it is to take this cross-cutting view, we're not going to optimise those relationships, we're not going to empower people. So, we'll make sure there's as good a handover as we can in the meantime, yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Ian, and thank you, Bethany, for the report. It's really, really welcome where we are now. Obviously, I would like to see this go further forward. I've got several questions, if that's okay, Chair. You had the celebration for the volunteers, which is great because it is very much needed. What input did you get from elected members prior to that? Because we in Burngrieve have yearly awards for people within the community that have done outstanding work. This year, for instance, we had the Pittsmore Pickers Leeds, who are a significantly large group of pickers, I'm sure you're familiar with, who have started doing programmes themselves. So, we're working with them to coordinate and facilitate BEAN, which is the Burngrieve Environmental Action Network, significantly pushing things forward. Those kind of groups, through Malcolm Camp and others, are really, really important in what they're doing. One thing that I've not necessarily seen on here, though, is the community cohesion element. So, if you went to the Lower Firth Park Pickers, that was effectively one family that kick-started that, and the reason that we recognise those guys in our awards is because they've managed to build a very extensive network in the Lower Firth Park area, just below Firth Park itself, Camel Road, that area, where we've got pickers across the age demographic and the kind of demographics of Roma, Pakistani, British, Afro-Caribbean. So, in terms of representation, we really wanted to recognise their work because of the community cohesion element they're doing in making sure that nobody gets blamed for the litter as a community, but more as individual acts of selfishness. So, I'm not quite sure I'm seeing that in here, and maybe if you'd had more elected member support, maybe those elements could have fed in there. And I'm not sure whether you had sufficient support in what you did to get this to this stage, or whether that's going to be part of the next iteration of this report, because I think that on-the-ground elected member support from our connections with those in the community that are doing amazing work would be really, really influential in taking it forward. So, if you could kind of like pick up on some of those parts. And actually, finally, in a large part, much of this could sit within the LACs, and I do think that there should still be a coordinator sitting across all the LACs to help bring all that work together for sharing of best practice, because it'll be essential that the LACs communicate with each other to see what each other's doing well. But I don't necessarily see that LACs are as prominent in here as they could be. So, any thoughts that you've got on that element as well would be really appreciated.
I think that's really welcome. On a number of projects, we worked with individual LACs when we were trying to do kind of smaller projects within specific areas, and I agree to have kind of a person that is over-rouching across the whole city is really crucial, but I'd really welcome kind of further working with LACs to make sure that our approach is bespoke to different communities. In terms of the environmental recognition event, we did try to share that as widely as we could. I think because it was the first time that we'd done something like this and we'd brought groups from across the city, it was quite hard in the beginning to actually find what groups were out there. It was, a lot of online research was done, but also speaking to the different LAC managers to see who was aware of what groups in the city. But what we found is that there were a lot of groups kind of operating under the radar that, as a council, we weren't necessarily aware of. So, I think now we've identified a lot of the groups that are out there, I do agree that that comes in the next step of bringing LACs in and bringing councillors in to work with those groups. Now we have a bit more awareness of who's out there.
Thanks, Beth. And just a couple of other points I'd say as well, is that this is just one strand. Obviously, members funded £500,000 worth of improvements. This is the first outcome report we've brought as a result of that. There will be others to come as part of the exit strategy from that. What that £500k did do was provide some investment that looked at how we could work smarter moving forward. So, there will be other toolkits and things coming forward as part of that, and we are working closely with the LACs on some of those wider ones. The other thing to just say is that this is obviously the start. You know, we had really strong work being done in certain areas like the parks areas, but actually this is where we're coming from, a lower point. I think absolutely moving forward, there's big opportunities here around the health agenda. You mentioned cohesion, loneliness, we know, is a big factor. You can get prescriptions for exercise. So, I think working with LACs and that real focus on neighbourhoods, and we've, you know, we've got a new directorate now on that, I think there's a real opportunity to improve around that. And I think clearly the council's budget, and we know different to other councils, cannot deliver all the improvements everyone would like anymore just with our own staff and our own contracts. So, if we want to achieve the outcomes we're looking for with the corporate plan and for the city, we absolutely need to look really widely on that.
Thanks for that. Do copy councillor Milson a copy of all those outcome reports, she was asking me about this at full council's work, what the money had been spent on. I've got Tim and then Mike.
Yeah, I was going to, with the LACs, because one of the things with the groups you identify, because obviously like the Sheffield Litter Pickers are sort of more of an umbrella group for lots of litter picking groups, which I'm involved with a couple. But the thing is, is when you're doing the information gathering, are you actually asking those groups, have you been asking those groups where they operate and so that we potentially have that information so that if we then involve in the LACs more, that we can make sure that the LACs are aware of those groups are operating within their area? Because, you know, there's lots more other groups that we've probably all been finding when we've been looking for funding that operate at low levels, but certainly under the radar, and occasionally they, you know, a lot of them don't need lots of extra money or resource, but occasionally they do. And that's the thing, is that they, you know, that they know that once they're on our radar and if the LACs have access to information, then they're sort of groups that they could be approached if they're looking for some one-off funding or other funding of other sorts, so that we can use it. Because that's the thing, is to make sure that we value and deepen our relationship with the volunteer groups as they're, you know, and make them feel that we do care about them, because they're the lifeblood of the community.
No, I completely agree. With the list of 157 groups that we've found, I have been breaking them down into the LAC areas, and I'll be sharing those with the managers, and I'm happy to share it more widely, because like I said in the beginning, it was quite difficult to find out what groups were out there, as not every group has a website and not, you know. So, it's really important to share that information and make sure that it doesn't get lost. So, no, I completely agree.
You've mapped it as well, you've mapped it.
Yes, we've been working on producing a map as well of that, so it would be a lot easier, and a screenshot of that is included in the strategy. So, it'd be a lot easier to see across the city where are maybe some blind spots where we don't have as many groups, and what are the reasons for that, and how can we support people in that area, remove the barriers that are preventing them from getting involved, and enable a more fair spread of groups across the city an opportunity.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Bethany and Ian, for the report. It is very welcome, and I was pleased to hear you talking just now about those parts of the city where it has been difficult to kick-start and to sustain that kind of voluntary action. In my own area, we did have an excellent coordinator for the Fox Hill Litter Pickers, but since that person has been, what's the best phrase, perhaps afflicted with domestic and family concerns, it's not been possible for that person to continue in that role, and we don't really have anyone who's been able to sustain that since. On the other hand, we have a revived Tara at Scraithwood, and I was invited last night to put word out that they'll be meeting at 11 o'clock this Saturday for a litter picking session, which was very good of them to get me to do that, but unfortunately I have another commitment at that time, but that's when they're going to be out there, it's their estate, and they want it looking a lot better and tidier, and, you know, they're proud of where they live, and it's great that people there are wanting to step up and do that. For my sins, or perhaps for other reasons, Sheffield City Council sent me to the Peak District National Park Authority, and so this is on a slightly different tack. The Park Authority has voluntary, yeah, some voluntary action, people, voluntary rangers even, that go out and do litter picks, and I was struck by the fact that there is quite a number of people from Sheffield who go out into the Peak District National Park to do environmental work there, not just litter picking, but also other work. I didn't know whether that had been taken account of, because obviously it is a, here is this great park on our doorstep, you know, we brand ourselves as the outdoor city, and although it may not be technically within Sheffield's boundary, it is a resource there that people who live here can go out and enjoy.
Yeah, I think it's definitely important to recognise, something that I've found throughout this project, that litter pickers and other environmental volunteers don't see, you know, the boundaries between parks, the Peak District and volunteering in the street scene. So, that's why I think it's really important to, as a council, work not only across departments but with other partners in the city, like the colleagues, working within the Peak District, to kind of have a cohesive offer and support volunteering across the city, because the likely thing is, is if you're passionate about environmental volunteering in your local park, you also care about the, you know, the Peak District and whether there's litter or rubbish in your local communities and your streets as well. So, I do think it's important to connect with partners across the Peak District and across our local parks as well as our street scene, which the strategy focuses on.
Thank you for that. I would point out that some of the Peak National Park is in Sheffield, certainly the western half of Dornotley Wood is Peak Park. Do you go for a walk around Blackhamore? You are welcome. I extend that invitation as a Dornotley councillor. It's a marvellous, it's a marvellous little walk, and that's just on the edge of Sheffield, and you obviously can go further out than that. Paul?
Thanks, Chair. Just quickly, wanted to just thank you for the work you've done. It's really good, and as you said several times about highlighting missed opportunities in the past, you know, just really hope that we don't start missing them again now that you're, you know, you're moving on. I don't know, maybe it's the right time for you to move on with your personal development, but I personally will be sorry to see you go, because, you know, you've done a really good job, and it's clearly something that you're good at, and you, you know, you've built up a lot of knowledge, and, yeah, it's really important that we do continue the work, and I'm really sorry that the money hasn't been found yet to continue funding the position. So, that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Cliff.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so, I mean, in Fullwood, we've got two excellent litter picking groups at least, and it keeps it nice and clean and that, but I'm obviously aware that other sides of parts of the city are not in that position. Obviously, the priority's got to be to develop local involvement. I don't know whether you see any scope for encouraging people to move a little bit wider than what they do at the moment, existing litter picking groups to get, you know, to perhaps take on an area, to perhaps sort of pump-prime it, so to sort of get it started. I know this could be difficult, you know, I must be sensitive about these things, but your views on that?
Yeah, so, from engaging with the groups, particularly Sheffield Litter Pickers as an example, the admins of that group told me that they often get messages from people who are wanting to start groups in the city, and they're more than happy to share the learning that they have from their extensive experience. So, I think groups already are kind of supporting each other to get started, and I think that the council can take a facilitative role in that, which is something that we were trialling with the volunteer recognition event, was bringing groups from across the city who might never have met before to share learning and hopefully be able to support each other to not only start up groups but also maybe expand into other elements of environmental volunteering as well. So, no, I definitely agree.
Thanks. Alexi, you've already had a go. I think we're in danger of spending all day on this item, and spending so long I make people think of more things to say. Is it important?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if you could elaborate a bit more about the collaboration with schools, because I think that is a real way, with schools in every part of the city, where you can encourage and, you know, give other areas the means and share the expertise of how to start groups. And if there is anything in the strategy that advocates supporting or putting more resources into... And if there is anything in the strategy that advocates supporting or putting more resources into areas where there isn't established litter pickers.
Yes, so throughout the project, I worked extensively with the AME Education Officer, whose kind of main role is to go into schools and educate young people about littering and how they can get involved. We were also looking to kind of connect with other education providers as well. We did a pilot project with Chief Training, who support young people with SEND. And we took them with the AME Education Officer and representatives from Sheffield Litter Pickers on a litter pick, which was hosted by the Community Library in that area as well. And I think there is, you know, more opportunity to connect with schools. There are obviously those barriers in place, rightly so to protect children. So there were barriers trying to get into schools, which is something that we need to look into more. But I think it is really important to go into schools and spread that message amongst young people, but also bring volunteers who are experienced and who can share their love of litter picking and environmental volunteering, because I think that's what's really contagious, so.
Thank you, thank you. So I do have a couple of questions myself, a couple of points. Firstly, having the equipment at volunteer, having the litter picking equipment at volunteer libraries is certainly something that's been raised with me by people in my ward that, yes, they can go to Rexall Library. And that's actually not, not a bad location for about half of Dornotley Wood. Exeter Library is pretty good, but Dornotley Library is volunteer run. And again, people just feeling a little bit left out. So I don't know how straightforward that would be if they're on the same kind of delivery network anyway, whether that's an easy thing to extend. I certainly would encourage that. The other thing is the reference, Alexi referred to earlier as well, to Fix My Street. You know, I know it's something that we've been, that I used to use religiously, I've got to say. And I would occasionally get slightly sniffy emails back from the council saying, yes, thank you for reporting this, but do you realise you could save us time by going on the web form? It's on page 99 of the agenda. I don't know if it's, if there's been any publicity about using Fix My Street. Whether it's worth, is it true to say and is it worth saying? Look, this is now the preferred way for you to report things. Because once you've downloaded the app and set it up, it's so easy to use. And, you know, we ought to make a little bit of noise about it because the message is different to what it used to be.
Yes, so with Fix My Street, I haven't been involved in the specific kind of team that's been looking into the technical side of that. But I know that they were running a test box to see if there was a new way of integrating with Fix My Street, because obviously it is a preferred option for a lot of volunteers. So I'm not 100% clear on the kind of technical side of that. But I know that that is an option that many people do take and that the team are trying to make it easier for requests to come through that system and not be delayed, as I believe they were previously. But our website is also, of reporting online is also an option that is available for people to use as well.
Tim?
I thought there was in the budget last year that was, they're supposed to be linking the two together, the Fix My Street to be automatic. Because one of the things that I know that the litter pickers in my area do is when they've finished their litter pick, is that they do the Fix My Street because that tells the rubbish is there to be picked up. So I'm slightly surprised if it hasn't been linked, because there was a budget item last year that was supposed to be making sure that it was fully integrated. Is it not?
Without wanting to respond on behalf of Bethany, Chair, is the report does say on page 99 that the pilot trial has been operational for all public to use? So I think that linkage has been made. I think Beth was just saying she didn't know how the technical side of it worked.
Yeah, I think that has been. There was some, there was some significant technical challenges. And I think what was happening is colleagues who were processing the inquiries were having to double enter a lot of the, you know, the inquiries. So there's been work done on that. What I think we need to do is just confirm what the status of that now is. Has that been completed? And that is now a valid official route that works for us and for groups. But I know there's been a lot of work done, just making it easier to report things. I know you've done a lot on the web and things like that, haven't you? So because it wasn't as easy as it needed to be, even on the council webpage, it, you know, it was harder than it needed to be. So but I think we need to probably give you an update on that by email probably, just to confirm, you know, what the latest is on that. As Bethany said, it's some other colleagues who are working on the mechanics of it.
Yeah, I very much welcome confirmation of that. And if and when it is fully operational, that it's, you know, it's then publicised as a route for people to report things. I think that would be really useful. And I know it's something that we've had questions come to us earlier in the year about. I think not least from the, from the person who asked us a public question today, it's been pressing for this, Fix My Street for a while. So, okay, I hope no more comments on, yes, Mark, you've also already had a go, Mark. But things allowed, Alexi, and now on grounds of balance, or I'll get another point of order from Mike. I'm gonna have to let you go.
Thank you, Chair. Just as a brief kind of addition to the bit on Fix My Street is, part of the original work that was done on this was to make it easier for the people, our public, to report things in. And one thing that would be helpful going forward, that if we can establish a citywide coordinator role, is that that coordinator doesn't limit reporting opportunities just to Fix My Street. Basically, the upshot being is that the easier it is for people to report in, the more information we'll get. And then we'll not get that under-reporting in certain areas that used to be endemic and why we were missing much of the data that we needed to gather. So as part of that ongoing brief, I'd like to see that put in future consideration, please.
I think that's right, Mark. And I think, but I think the way I would look at it is this. If we can get people to use Fix My Street to report things rather than the telephone, that means there is capacity in the call centre for people who can only use telephones. And then, you know, so that should make it easier for them as well. I think that's, you know, probably the way we ought to see it. I don't see any more hands, so can we agree the recommendations in the report? I will take silence as the dissent of the meeting. Good, that is agreed. Thank you very much. So thank you, Ian, Bethany. Good luck, Bethany, with whatever you do next. And yeah, item 10 is the Sheffield Markets Performance Review. So I believe we've got some slides. Yes, do you want to come and introduce yourselves? And we'll have some slides and we'll have questions on them. Thank you.
Liam Pond, I'm Inter Operations Manager for City Centre Maintenance in Sheffield Markets.
Ben Brailsford, Head of Street Scene Services.
Yeah, so the purpose of this report obviously is a markets performance report. So it's to give a bit of insight as to where the market service is currently performing at. And also it will be sort of looking at where we were pre-pandemic. So obviously before Covid and what kind of effect that's had on the recovery of Sheffield markets through that particular phase. Could you just have the next slide, please? So we know that a sort of like a deeper dive report across the market service is needed on a future work programme. But for the purposes of this report, we've decided to look at six key areas. One is footfall. We've got occupancy levels. We've got the economic impact report, which shows the economic impact of Sheffield markets on the local economy. We've got energy costs. We've got the budget position and we've also got the debt position. Next slide. So as you can see, More Market year-to-date, so that's year-on-year against 2021, is up by 2.3% on footfall, which is, we had about 2.6 million visitors to the More Market last year. Crystal Peaks has also seen quite substantial increase in footfall, to 23.4% when compared to 2021. There's a number of factors. You know, when you look at, we've tried to add additional supplementary events, certainly down at the More Market. So we've got things like Reco Affairs, we've got Makers Markets, we've got, you know, a sci-fi pop culture market that's been introduced last year. So that's certainly helped increase the footfall within the More Market. Could you just have the next slide, please? So as you can see from the graph, this is from our PFM system. This measures all our footfall across both markets. And as you can see, that shows that 2.3% increase. If you look at the bottom part of the graph, you can also see a trend line where you can obviously see across the course of the year, that varies wildly, certainly through, you know, mid, so spring, summer. But then obviously recovers and gets back up to 16.8% by the end of the year in the More Market. Can I just have the next slide, please? Crystal Peaks obviously had a really poor start to the year in 2021, which is possibly why the variance is up so much in 2022. But again, it's a really positive sort of outlook in that the footfall is going in the right direction. So the retail in general obviously did suffer greatly during Covid-19. That's not just a market issue, that was retail nationally. And many consumers obviously changed their shopping habits. So they went from traditional means of coming down to the market and shopping to moving to online and getting groceries through online deliveries. So that was a challenge to the markets in itself. And it's recovery phase to sort of see footfall figures returning back to where they're at, certainly where we're at in 2022. Could you just have the next slide, please, Rachel? So when you look at pre-pandemic to 2019, the More is down 8.3%. But obviously, when we do move to the next slide, you'll see that by December, it had actually recovered to only 2.2% down. Crystal Peaks sees a bit more of a significant decrease in 16.5% down. But again, the trend towards the end of that calendar year was encouraging and it was only 11.6% towards the end. One of the other issues obviously at Crystal Peaks is since pandemic, the availability of public transport ring to Crystal Peaks has reduced, which may have impacted consumers being able to reach the marketplace, which is why it may have seen a bigger drop off in footfall figures. Could I just have the next slide? Yeah. So there you can see, towards the end of the year, the More has got back to, on a 2.2% down on 2019. And a study by data analysts over at Springboard, they suggest that retail in 2022 was 14.2% down still nationally. So in line with that, both markets are pretty much holding their own when it comes to footfall figures and the recovery since the pandemic. Next slide, please, Rachel. Sorry. And there you can see again that that trend towards the end of 2019 at Crystal Peaks started to get back to where it, where we sort of wanted it to be. Next slide, please, Michelle. So occupancy, the More is up at 82% and Crystal Peaks is at 76%. National Association for British Market Authorities, you know, in 2018, there was roughly a baseline of 76% occupancy across all markets nationally. So as you can see, by using that as a baseline, we are above that in the More Market. Crystal Peaks is around it. But looking at quarter one for the new financial year, we've actually got a couple more tenants due to going to Crystal Peaks, so that will be more in line with 80%, hopefully by the start of quarter one of the new financial year. The target for next year, obviously, when we're doing service planning and whatnot, we want to increase on that even more. So we would like to see 85% occupancy across both markets. And, you know, one of the things that is apparent is markets in recent years have become more than just, you know, traders selling food, you know, obviously eating out and, you know, miscellaneous goods. It's now become a health hub, so we've got district nurses down in the More Market. We've got, you know, cancer, Mid-Millan down there in the More Market as well. Just during Covid, it became part of the Covid vaccination programme, so it was Covid vaccination hub. And recently, just before Christmas, it became a welcoming place. So obviously, when the cost of living crisis hit, we started supporting people to stay warm, where they could access information for financial support. We're also seeing businesses that were traditionally located on a high street are finding markets a more viable option long-term for them to sustain their business. So we're seeing things like tattoo parlors, charms and giftware, nail bars, craft nails and jewellers, just to name a few of those. Next slide, please, Michelle. So the economic impact report, this was carried out by Independent Research Group, CADA. It's quite a substantial report and we've had to break it down quite a bit, but we can make that available to members if they do want to delve deep into the main report. The main takeaway from this is obviously the gross value added measures its contribution to the economy of the market in this instance. That is to show that for every pound invested in the market, £19 actually goes back into Sheffield's economy. And it also shows that Sheffield markets supports over 500 jobs directly. And then there's also an indirect, you know, supporting of jobs on the wider sort of local economy and national economy. Sorry, can I just have the next slide, please? So budget position. Obviously, when budgets are set, we had an income target for the More, which was just over a million pounds. We're forecast to finish this financial year under that at 931,000. We also have a budgetary provision of 1.85, well, 1.86 million pounds and we are forecast to overspend at 2 million. I would just like to add though, the majority of that overspend has actually come in energy costs. So the way that energy costs spiral certainly since the events in February of last year, they're seeing a massive increase, which nobody could really forecast when the budgets were set. Could I have the next slide, please, Rachel? And again, we've got another income target of 637,000, slightly under that still, at 587,000 for Crystal Peaks. We also have a budgetary provision of 812,000 and we are due to slightly overspend. It's not as significant as the More's overspend, but again, it's still just a slight overspend. And again, that's down to spiralling energy costs. I think, just going back to the budget, councillor Jartons also mentioned that in a previous session of committee that the More Market is still carrying its own capital costs. So we are, I think, the only facility in the organisation that pays our capital costs straight out of our budgetary position. So again, that is also reflected in the overall outgoing of the More Market Service. So going on to energy costs, you know, historically, energy costs have always been one of the highest expenditures to the market services and that was even prior to the way that energy costs have spiralled this year. Due to the recent energy crisis following the invasion of Ukraine, prices have escalated rapidly over the past 12 months, creating significant additional financial pressures on the market service. But prior to those issues, we'd already started mitigations to try and lower our energy consumption and to try and bring down costs. So there was some grant funding taking place with colleagues in facilities management, where we had, in the More Market, we had all our back-of-house lighting changed from high-energy, sort of like fluorescent and compact lights to low-energy LED. All the office area was also implemented in that grant funding. It's a pretty poor picture, but there's also solar PV on the market office roof now. So that's also contributing to, you know, providing our own renewable energy. And even prior to that, we'd recognised that there were a lot of high-energy, sort of like halogen lights across both markets. So again, you can see in the pictures there, we've retrofitted that to low-energy corn lamps. So we've done quite a bit of work before the energy crisis on trying to lower energy consumption. We did a full plant itinerary, so we've sort of looked across the plant usage in both markets to make sure that we're running as efficiently as possible. And similar measures have also been taken at Crystal Peaks, where we actually stripped out half the high-level lighting in the main hall because it was oversaturated. And then future programmes, we're also looking at re-surveying both markets. And then future programmes, we're also looking at re surveying both markets for renewables. We did have a, a survey done in two thousand and eighteen, but since then, technology's moved on to the fact where it wasn't feasible in the past. Some, some renewables might, may now be feasible, certainly on weight issues when you're putting it on, up onto the roof and whatnot. You know, things might have changed in that, that aspect. We've also been talking about the connection to the district heating and decarbonisation of the more market. And that sort of conversation with capital delivery services and PFM is happening now. So we're looking at grant funding the majority of that work to connect to Viola's district heating. That's not particularly on energy costs, it doesn't save on energy costs, it just saves on carbon output. So we are looking at the overall strategy of the council, which is net zero by twenty thirty. And that'll significantly improve the more's sort of carbon emissions with connection to the Den district heating. Could I have the next slide please? The last item on this report is the historic bad debt. So last pre-Covid historical debt report, we identified six hundred and thirty one thousand tied to the market service. The latest figure is now down at five hundred and thirty seven, so that shows a reduction of the debt by ninety four thousand across two years. Of the remaining five hundred and thirty seven thousand, four hundred and twenty eight thousand, as that is in arrangements. So either with finance DCAs, you know, it's all accounted for. And that leaves a remaining hundred and nine thousand outstanding for the markets to actively pursue. Decisive action has been taken across both markets about tackling debt. And that's resulted in unfortunately, three evictions and, and four tenancy reassignments. But when it becomes to a point where businesses aren't sustainable anymore, as a responsible landlord, the only course of action is to stop them spiralling further into, to debt. Another thing that we've done as a management team is we've introduced pre-tenancy meetings. So at the point of when a new trader comes into the market, we actually sit down and talk about the financial implications of trading in the market. And therefore, there's no sort of shocks to what they, they are required to pay as a trader. We've also put new procedures in place with the market officers team to monitor debt patterns. So we can tackle it at a much earlier stage before things escalate to a point where the debt becomes more difficult to recover.
So, so thank you for that. I mean, thanks for the, the information there. I was, I, I would like to stay, in this, in the discussion, I'd like to stay members towards looking to the future, I suppose. I think, I think we want, we, you know, we obviously want our markets to succeed. It is something within the remit of this committee that, 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 that we, the market service and that we should be, you know, I'm convinced we should be supporting them and helping them to succeed. And I mean, there are initiatives which, which we might talk about and such things as the, the record fair and other potential fairs to get in, getting more trade on, on, on the weekend. Initiatives like that, I hope we can, we hope we expand and diversify on. So I hope members can, can focus on, on, on that, that kind of thing. And I do have a question though, it, it's slightly baffling that the idea that connecting to district heat isn't going to save any money. Because there is a, we, we've also learned on this committee, we've been responsible for the, for the Viola contract, that the, the heat network has more heat than it can sell. And so on one level in principle, the marginal cost of, of the heat is, is, is zero. Of course, it's not zero, you have to charge for it because, you know, you've got some money to produce, but, but in one sense, it is zero. And also, I understand that, that, that we, we, the council benefits from the sale of that, that heat. And so even, even if, even if it doesn't save the market any money, it might save the councils some money in terms of being able to sell the heater in, in the heater network. So I hope that that can be considered in, in, in making the case for the investment in connection to the network, that there is a saving. I don't know if, Richard, I don't know if you can, can clarify on that point?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It, it is something we're looking at. There's a significant, significant capital cost to getting the, the main connected to the more market. And you're absolutely right, it's something that there are some benefits, cost savings being one ultimately. There will be a longer payback because of the cost of energy at the moment, but it is definitely something we're looking at and we're hoping to progress in the new financial year.
Thanks. Yeah, surely a shorter payback while energy is, while, while gas is expensive. It's a shorter payback, isn't it, on a, on a, yeah, yeah. Thank you for that. Mark?
Yes, Chair. I might want to come back in later, so I'll just warn you. So I've got a question in terms of the information you've given us now. Yeah, just, just, just kind of like, in terms of the headline figures of, I think it was a hundred and twenty, one point two million and almost two million visitors for the two market spaces. Those numbers themselves don't necessarily give us the information that we might want to make us, help us make decisions better on the spaces. So in terms of the footfall, do you have any indication as to how many of them are return visits? Is it a case that, say, more market has a, a particular faithful that keep appearing on it every day and that disproportionately represented in that two million visits? What, what, what's the kind of nature of that footfall and the return visits for the more?
So the software itself that captures the data for footfall is, is very simplistic in terms of, it's quite dated now. So we don't have footfall based on demographics, for instance. We do know that, obviously, we do have returning consumers that traditionally have used the market, you know, throughout their lifetime. But one of, one of our main aims is to look at bringing in new customers as well. So part of that initiative of bringing in things like reco fairs is to try and change the demographic from the tried and tested method of, you know, somebody just coming in with a weekly shopping to using it as, as more of like a social hub. So they'll come, they'll come to certain events that they'll lead in the more market. And the, the wider, more array of traders that we can get in there, obviously, more services and, and more goods that can be purchased down there can benefit across demographics rather than just focusing on one. As far as the data goes though, we can't sort of distinguish between demographically whether, you know, they are returning consumers or not.
Yeah, I think just to add to Liam's point of view, he's, he's absolutely right, the, the system won't allow us to do that. I think we have undertaken sort of customer survey activity in the past. So there is some data out there that we can share with you after. But I think certainly what I'd like to see is we do a little bit more of that so we understand our customer demographic a bit more. So I think if we can take an action away to, to, to look into doing that and putting a proposal together about how we pull that information together going forward. But I think there's something we can, we can rely on.
Thank, thank, thank you for that. Because anecdotally and, and very superficially, because I've not used the more market as much as maybe I should have, when I have been down there, it's usually kind of like to grab food in the eating court area. And, and what I've observed is, is there seems to be groups of eight or more quite often sitting around two tables clustered together. And it seems to be like a regular thing for them. It seems to be a large social network, allows them, gives them a reason to get out of bed often, to come to town and, and, and come together. So I noticed that you did mention the, the welcoming spaces as part of, of the work that's ongoing. And one of the things that I'm kind of anxious on, it touches on what Joe was saying in terms of other benefits that can be leveraged in. To see the markets just as an economic entity and just as a way of retail to, and cash to exchange hands is not sufficient because it feels to me that the markets actually have a significant role to play in terms of the social interactions and networks of many people within our city. Often those that are maybe more marginalised and wouldn't necessarily feel welcoming in other spaces, trendier bars or whatever. You just go down to your kind of greasy spoon or, or your oriental food or whatever it is provision you've got down there. So, so there is something about protecting that character of it. Yes, we do need to get new footfall in to drive the diversity and the vibrancy of the market, but also not excluding those members of the public who, who do use that as a approach. I've not really used Crystal Peaks at all, but more market itself does seem to have a significant element of that, which is also then why we've then got the NHS located there. Because those harder to reach individuals within the community are there at, at the table to be, to be spoken to. So I, I'd like to make sure that in the strategy going forward, that the markets focus on that social element and that provision that it can do to support our most vulnerable in our community, if possible. Thank you, Chair.
I mean, I absolutely agree. I mean, we've always kept a substantial, you know, area set aside just, just for that alone. So the, the social hub experience of the market, I mean, to coin a phrase, is it's more than just the market, which is what they've always, they've always said anyway. So that has always been an important aspect of, of the market's overall sort of vision.
Thank you. I, I thank you for that. I, I would add that the, the food court is excellent these days. The, the range of stuff there is, when I've been there, there's been something new and interesting to eat each time. And, and as far as I can see, the, the units are now full in the, in the food area. So somewhere to go and eat, somewhere to go and eat, people. Paul?
Cheers. Are cannibals vegan? I think they are. That was the question. Are you going to answer it?
Do you want me to answer whether cannibals are vegan? No, I don't think they are. Happy, happy to be of assistance.
I think it's a, it's a topic for debate, but maybe another time. I was going to ask you then about when, when you were saying about some of the businesses in the market who struggle or, or close. If, if there's anything that you do about signposting them at, at the beginning of the tenancy and perhaps even throughout it, to, to support them with their business, by signposting them to Business Sheffield, which offer a lot of services, you know, to try and help small local businesses. And, and secondly, if there's a roadmap to get the, the buildings to EPCC and then B by, I think, if, if the white paper in government has been or is going to be passed, then EPCC by twenty seven, EPCB by twenty thirty. Yeah, is there a roadmap designed for that yet? Thanks.
So for the first point, obviously, like I said, we, we are monitoring closely, you know, if, if people are struggling certainly with, with payments. And we, we do sit on a regular occurrence with those individuals to discuss, you know, what their issues may be. To say that obviously we've taken decisive action, action in the past and that's resulted in, you know, tenancies being cancelled and evicted, that is the extreme end of, of the sort of spectrum. Prior to that, there are many consultations with the trader. They do talk to people like at Business Sheffield to see what options are out there to help them out on the financial aspects of it. There's also been tenancy reassignment. So if, if a trader's particularly struggling, there's been a support where they've actually moved that business on to a new tenant and that's covered the costs of their debt to the council, but then they've left without debt. So ultimately, they're not carrying that debt with them once they leave the market. Do you want to talk to them?
And just to follow the Business Sheffield stuff, I think that's a really important relationship that we've got. And obviously Sheffield have been down there and not just offered sort of financial support, but also talks about things like marketing and options of working together on that. So yeah, it's, it's certainly something that we continue to work closely with in terms of the options. On the, the building's roadmap, I mean, obviously there's a sinking fund for the more markets, but that is just about keeping the building operating as it is. We'll continue to work with, with FM and property on what the kind of development or development opportunities are for the buildings going forward. But as, as things stand, I don't believe there's a, a formal roadmap that's been provided at this point. But we'll work with FM to make sure that something's identified in the overall council vision for that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be really useful because if, if this white paper is passed and it does become legislation, it'll be an enormous six-figure fine, you know, massive risk to the council if we fail to meet those targets. And so even accepting that, you know, we might not have the funding today, that it would be good to have that, that, that roadmap, that feasibility study in place, you know, to, to hit the floor running when, when the money becomes available. Thanks.
Thanks for that. Next I've got Cliff. Cliff, I remember running into you at one of the butchers in the more market a, a few months ago. For, for Paul's benefit, the produce there is not vegan either.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I mean, a declaration of interest, I am a regular at the market and it's excellent. You know, there's some really unique stuff there that it would be a huge loss to the city if, if it wasn't there. You know, there, there is not replicated anywhere else a lot of what, what they do and that, that is brilliant. There's a couple of points on, 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 on energy and that. You say you've upgraded the lighting. What about on individual stalls? Has it included that or is it just the general hall lighting? And the other question is, is each individual stall monitored, charged separately for its electricity?
Yeah, so on, on your first point is the, the work that got carried out in more market was all grant funded and it only included back of house. So that's the caged areas where the storage, the warehouses downstairs and the office areas. Now, at Crystal Peaks, we have, we have been implementing a change in lighting in the stall holders. So basically, whenever a light fitting has gone effectively, we get in PFM and we've been changing from the fluorescents to LED where we can. Again, we don't have the funds to just do all that in one go, so we are implementing it in stages. But certainly, I think now at least a third of Crystal Peaks stall holders do have LED lighting. On your second point, all traders, warehouses, cages and stalls are submitted. So they are individually charged for their own usage.
Mike?
Thank you, Chair. I was, I was struck by a, a figure quite early on in the report, which suggests there's a multiplier that for every pound that we've put in, it generates nineteen pounds into the Sheffield economy. And certainly that is to be applauded. I did wonder what, what foundations that, that assertion rested on. I'm sure they're sound, but it, it would, it would be good to know that. Like Cliff, I do, I do from time to time go to the market. There's an interesting, quite, quite partial to the Caribbean stall there because of its, because it's one of the few places you can buy okra in this city, which is a lovely vegetable, and I commend that to both meat eaters and, and vegans alike. But it, it is helpful to have a bus route, having lost bus routes in part of Sheffield. The, I'm thankful that the eighty six does take you right past the more market and will certainly get you home from there. But yes, if you can tell us a bit more about the multiplier that you've concluded brings this economic benefit?
Yeah, so CADA Research, initially, they started the report in two thousand and nineteen. We recommissioned them in two thousand and twenty two to update figures based on occupancy footfall. It, it, it sort of takes into account all the aspects that we're sort of talking around now. But then data on the full and part-time jobs at both markets, the staff involved in running of the markets, the estimates on GVA based on GVA per employee. So across distribution, transport, accommodation and food sector at Sheffield level. So not looking at the bigger picture nationally, but there is aspects of that as well where you look at provision of goods from nationally, not just in the local area. We can, if you are interested in seeing the full report, it is quite substantial for you to get to these figures. So it is on a time basis, you could be sat here for a couple of hours explaining how the multipliers actually work out to get to the, to the GVA. But if you would like to see that report, I will, I will definitely share it with you.
Thanks for that. Would you say it's a, it's a, it's a fairly standard and robust methodology for working out GVA's for things like this? And we apply it to, we applied it, for example, to the Eurovision bid when we made a, the CADA, when we made that bid. Is that, is that sort of thing, isn't it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that intervention. I'd, I'd much rather hear that than have to wait for the report for two hours. But can I, can I come on to the, the social side, which is, which is also, also important? We've established that the, the markets are a warm and wel, and welcoming place for people to come. And obviously, that, that And obviously that, that benefits people on very low incomes. Have we saw any funding to, to support the, the welcoming spaces that the markets provide from out, from outside, rather than relying on our own waste and street scene budget and what the market traders pay in rent and utility bills?
Yeah, I think my understanding is that the, the funding that helps, that initially helped supply the COVID-19 hub that was in there initially and then has transformed into the welcoming places, the, the funding is supported from outside of the waste and street scene budget. So certainly grant funding from central government was allocated to the COVID-19 hub when that was first in place. And there's further grant funding, I know that's been drawn down and claimed for some of the welcoming spaces work. I, I don't know the direct correlation between some of the grant funding we pulled in and the, the cost of supplying that, but I think it's important to say it's not coming from the Moore Market's budget or waste and street scene budget in terms of supplying that, that activity and that hub.
Do you, do you have any figures at all for that?
Unfortunately I don't on that specific item, but clearly we can go away and pull those together.
Thank you. So I think at that point, there's not, there aren't any recommendations of this item. We have a, the next item is also about the market. So I think perhaps at this point we can move on to that. So yes, would you like to introduce the, the item 11 report please?
Yeah. So obviously, this is, this paper sets out a range of options regarding the recovery of utility charges for Moore and Crystal Peaks tenants. Increases in utility charges have not been passed through to tenants since 2014 and energy prices have obviously risen steeply in recent years. This has created a significant sort of under-recovery between the charge tenants pay and the cost to the council. This report therefore also sets out the impact of that under-recovery and proposes options in relation to charges going forward. Just a bit of background, market traders pay three separate charges in both the Moore Market and Crystal Peaks. There's obviously the rent for the market stall, a service charge that is designed to recover the cost of providing general services for tenants and the utility charge, which is the recharging of utilities and commodities used by, by traders. For the purpose of this report, that is the only thing that we're dealing with here, which is the, the recharges to those utilities. And it's nothing to do with the rental service charge aspects of it. As part of various support measures to alt-market traders through challenging economic times, which certainly through COVID-19 pandemic, the utility tariff is one of the reasons why it hasn't been touched since 2014. This has led to an undercharge in the recovery for all tenants' utility charges over this period. Additionally, the service charge payable by all tenants rests on the principle that all traders contribute to one-third of the utility charge for the common areas. So outside of, you know, recovering directly for usage by tenants, there's also a utility charge within the service charge for a third of all common areas. The market traders are all individually utility metered from their stalls, caged stored areas and warehouses to enable us to be able to provide accurate billing. The purpose of this report is to outline the financial implications that the under-recovery of recharged utilities to the tenants has created, provide some options on addressing the, this unsustainable situation. Due to the recent energy crisis following invasion of Ukraine, last year, energy prices have escalated rapidly over the past 12 months, creating significant additional financial pressures on the market service. The options set out in this report consider the impacts that increasing cost recovery could have on market traders who are already feeling the impacts of other price rises in goods and services due to the energy crisis, without impacting their overall business sustainability. So if you look at 1.3, the current position on costs, the, the below table sets out the projected full year effect of the cost of energy increases across the market service in 2022 and 2023 financial year. You know, in total, you're looking at an increase of 383,000 across both markets. In item 1.4.2, electricity tenants for the quarter of April to June, we're looking at an under-recovery of at least 95,000 in one quarter. The recovery rate for that quarter was also only 19% of the actual costs. Same with gas. Gas is slightly different because there's no traders at Peaks that use gas as a commodity. It's only down at the more that gas is used in cooking. But again, you're looking at an under-recovery of 18,000 for a quarter. And the recovery rate was only 8% of the actual cost. Mitigations, which we've also talked about in the performance report, energy efficiency improvement programmes in place to reduce the amount of energy used, the grant funded works that we discussed about in the Moore Market, the installation of the solar PV on the office roof, and also then replacing all the T8 and T5 fluorescent fittings throughout the service corridors, caged areas and plant rooms. Similar measures have also been taken in at Crystal Peaks, 50% reduction of the high-level lighting and a plant consumption survey was completed and an upgrade to a more efficient air handling system was installed four years ago. So 1.6 proposed options for energy cost recovery, 1.6.1 is no increase. So we'll keep it at the status quo. 1.6.2 is an increase, the current tariff's recharge tenants by 50%, then increase utility bills by 111% electricity and 107% on gas, which is this year's estimated average of how much energy prices have gone up this year. And then obviously 1.6.4 is full recovery of all energy charges from tenants at the current tariff that the council pays. Changes to fees, whatever we agree, cannot be implemented immediately. There will be a 12-week grace period from the decision today and that will then lead to a review after the implementation at six months. There's no proposal to backdate any under-recovery at this point. And therefore the, the recommended proposal is 1.6.3, which is 111% increase on electric and 107% on gas. Just to talk a bit lower about the financial and commercial implications, the council does have a statutory duty to set a balanced budget and continues to face significant financial challenges. The increase in cost of energy combined with other pressures the council is facing, is facing is significantly contributing to the council's budget deficit position. Without significant actions to reduce overspend and contain costs, an unsustainable financial position will be reached. Forecasting for next year, they are looking at a further 13% increase on electricity and 5% on gas. So that's on top of the, the increases that we've already incurred on in this year. If we were to look at the financial implications of option one, which is no change, no change to the tariffs, we're looking at an under-recovery of 348,000. Option two, which is the 58, 50% increase is under-recovery of 315,000. Option three, which is moving to the 111 and 107% increases is 275,000. And obviously then there's full cost recovery, which is the least financial risk to the council, but obviously more of a reputational risk in the fact that we could end up losing traders. So the reasons for recommendation, 6.1, the options outlined in 1.6.3 of increasing the current tariff by 111% and electricity by 107% on gas means that the charges are moving towards a principle of full cost recovery going forward.
Thank, thank you for that. I've, I've seen Mike. I just wanted to clarify a couple of points before, before I bring in Mike. On the service charge, you, you said there was an energy element to the service charge. So would this, would the agreement, one of these options increase the service charge?
No, we're not talking about service charge and rent today. It's just basically on the utilities recharged.
It's just the utilities that each individual stall uses that we would recharge them. And so the shortfall on the service charge, does that appear in these figures at all in terms of the, the energy? Okay. All right. So, so that, that's clear.
So I think the thing to say, Joyce, is that we expect to come back with a paper around service charges and rent at a later date as well. So if we can get a chance to cover off that.
Yes. Okay. Well, I, I look forward to that. I mean, I would observe if, 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 if there is, you know, 15, 20% vacancies in the market, then we're already charging maybe a little bit above a market rent, aren't we? I mean, that would be my, my comment on that, but let's, 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 let's go to that when we come to it. Okay. With, with that clarification and also with the observation, I think that men, I appreciate the officers' recommendations for what they are and, and the reasons for them. I think the views from members I've heard so far would be leaning towards the 50% and not the 107, 110% increase. But obviously that's for members now to explain their position. So Mike.
Thank, thank you, Chair. And I think on this, we, our group do share your concerns over such a steep hike. But I do want to go back to the point that the charges were set back in 2014 and we've gone through nine years. We've had some inflation, nothing like what we're going through at the moment, but why this wasn't looked at and brought forward for revisions? Because I imagine that we would, we would have broadly kept in line with inflation while it was quite low. So I do, I do wonder why we didn't get requests to, for more marginal increases, you know, prior to COVID striking in 2020.
Thanks, councillor. We would have to take that away and get some more detail around it. From memory, I think at the cabinet member at the time, there were issues around rents from the Moore Market opening in 2013. There was issues around the rent and what rent was set out and also service charge. So historically we've not recovered the actual rent position from the original business case. And we've not recovered and we're still not recovering today at the full service charge. So I think the focus was very much around the rents and service charge, trying to get them to a reasonable level. And I think the utility cost just got agreed to be left at that level. I would have to go away and look in more detail and I'll send a, a, a response to you on that question, but that's, that's from memory.
I, I add with that, Mike. I mean, I, I, I think, I think, I think it also adds to my, clarifies my earlier remark. Obviously the, the service charge and the rent and the energy costs are as a package, obviously have to be at a level that enables the market, market to succeed. And if that level posts a loss to the council, then so be it. We can't, we can't avoid that loss by charging more. We will, we will end up with, with less revenue coming in. So there is a logic to if, if, you know, if you, if the rents are, are difficult for traders to pay, not to, not, not to look at the energy at the same time. I think given where the energy markets are now, it makes sense for, it makes sense not to subsidize energy with rents when storeholders might have the, the, the ability to manage how much energy they use and decide how much they want to use, how much they want to pay for it. So there's a logic to that. I've seen you, Mark, but Alexi was next.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I totally agree with the question that Mike's asked there, but I'd also wonder whether that was a political position. So maybe we need to be looking at the previous incumbents rather than officers for that decision. But I don't know. So that would be good to, to find out. I think on, on the rise in gas prices, I think it's important to point out now that actually the year ahead wholesale gas prices are the lowest they've been in 588 days. In 10 days prices are going to go up regardless. Gas is now eight times cheaper than it was in August 2022, the same price that it was in July 2021 before the invasion. So the reason for the price increase now is not the invasion. You can't put it that on anymore. It's actually rampant profiteering by energy suppliers. You can see that in the profits of companies like Shell and BP and all the rest of them and the bonuses that they've given and dividends to shareholders. So that's where the money's going. I think it's important to say that it is not fair for the council to cover the costs of rampant profiteering. But neither is it, is it fair to expect the traders who are also facing the cost of living crisis and the cost of rampant inflation caused by this profiteering. So I think we do need to have this compromise that we've identified and then review the position in, I think, was it 12 months or six months?
Six months, six months to review the recommendation in the paper. I mean, I'm not sure you're right, Alexi. I mean, I, I appreciate the wholesale prices falling. And my understanding is that the, the, the domestic prices are driven by, the retail prices are driven by the futures market. And if the futures market stays well above the wholesale price consistently, that means that there are, there are market traders, there are financial intermediaries that are making all the money rather than the energy companies. So perhaps the profiteering is in a slightly different place, but we perhaps need an expert advice on what is, I appreciate the value of the rhetoric. Oh, it's all the terrible energy companies, but I think it's worth, it's worth, it's worth working exactly what's going on. Mark?
Thank you, Chair. To, to support some of what Alexi's saying there, it's, it's a, a statement of fact that the utility companies' profits have been increasing and the inflationary pressures that we see within our economy are largely due to excess profits made by some companies and speculators rather than just utilities. So, so the war in Ukraine is a smokescreen that government's using for not actually intervening in a more forceful manner. And that is a political statement and I'm happy to stand by that one. But it does come back to other elements that you've mentioned here. So one-third of the energy costs for the communal areas goes on to the rents, onto the energy consumption of each individual stall holder. My concerns are, are that where the stalls are marginal at best, if you put up the utilities at this moment in time, would that tip them over that threshold from being marginally viable to non-viable, therefore meaning that that market stall will then shut down and then their portion of the communal heating then goes on to a smaller number of stall holders, therefore driving up their expectation of what they're going to have to pay going forward. So I'm kind of really worried that by, yes, by putting on this cost, which the council can't necessarily afford to bear, will we make it that more stall holders will fail? And then it also comes on to the other element that stupid economics I get, if we put a million pound into the market, we get 19 million pound back into our local economy, according to the multiplier. So is this, the, 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 the 50% seems like a compromise, which seems not unreasonable, but by the same token, no increase at all, but also not necessarily be an unreasonable increase, assuming that the rest of the COVID budget could somehow fund that. But that, that's another one. But your feeling from the advice that you're giving to the stall holders currently and their economic positions, do you feel that we will have stall holders fail because we're passing on part of this bill? Or am I just being unduly concerned there?
I think if you're rightly imagined, it's kind of that. I, I don't think we'd be looking to increase this if we thought there was going to be wholesale failures of businesses from passing on this. And we certainly wouldn't make a recommendation that, you know, we would then expect a number of businesses to, to fail from that. So that isn't our expectation. I think you've seen from Liam's performance report earlier, that things are going in the right direction at the Moore Market and things like debt has been managed much better now than it has been previously. So I think Liam and the other staff in the market have got a really good handle on where traders currently are, have got supportive measures in place, have got a good view of where that's going to take us. And that's what's leading us to this recommendation. In terms of the recommendation point forward, again, just to be really clear on this, this is kind of 111%, 107% on their current rate. So we've been subsidizing them on utilities for many years. And what's happened in the last 12 months is that, is that subsidy has just gone bang. We've gone to an enormous subsidy from, from where we were. So by taking this in place, all we're doing is trying to return them to a position they would have been sort of, well, 12 months hence from, from now. But by the time we implement this, 15 months. So we've really kind of helped and supported, managed those businesses over the last 12 to 15 months to get ready for any increase that's coming. And certainly they're aware that increases are coming to that. I mean, in terms of what we're looking, looking at, the, the recommendation would mean about 70 pounds more a month in electricity for, for an average trader in the Moore Market. And again, probably about 60 pounds a month on average for, for a Moore Market trader using gas. So, you know, that's, that is an increase, but it, it is one that we expect to be able to be managed. Does that address your questions, Mark?
So in, in that context, that helps a lot because not So in that context, that helps a lot because, not insignificant in itself, because you've still got to push sales to cover back that, you're saying effectively the more, the storeholders will be looking at a daily increase in what they're paying at between three to five pounds, depending on the nature of their business, which obviously you do have to sell more to cover that off, but that in itself doesn't feel quite so high-wateringly steep. But the other element would be, and comes back to the six monthly review, the wholesale market has slumped due to countries being a bit more responsible in how they're sourcing We should be expecting within the next couple of months a decrease in actually what the utilities are being charged to us as consumers by the companies, they should be coming down. So we could potentially see a position where we come back to pre-Ukraine prices for utilities. Would we then be looking to be cutting the energy charges at that stage, or would that just simply be helping us to recover the previous subsidies that have been put in?
I think the way the council buys its energy is in baskets in advance, so in terms of the report, we put in there what we expect in the forecast for the next energy purchase to be, which is a further increase of thirteen percent on electricity and a further increase, is it five percent on gas? So we know that we're going to get charged even more next year, which we don't, again, we've not put into these figures, this is kind of looking backward really. So, but we also know that the energy that we buy is really, really good value in terms of what we do as a local authority. Colleagues in FM would be able to give more detail and bring it back to the committees in more detail, but previous reports have sort of said that other local authorities are trying to come into some of the purchases that we've already made because they're that good value. So I suppose what I'm saying is I'm not expecting to see a sudden reduction in our energy costs next year, but ultimately what we should be working back to is that principle of it's a direct pass-through. And what we're saying in the report really is that what we'd like to do is sort of see how this goes for six months, understand the impact on traders, have some real performance metrics, so we can see what impact any change has had, and then come back with a further report that says, well, this is how we think we could get to full cost recovery over a period of time, and also give yourselves the chance to have further discussions and decisions around that. So, yeah, I mean, you know, that's kind of where we're looking to approach this, Mark, if that helps.
Thanks. I mean, I do kind of appreciate the point of Mark's question. I would put it possibly more bluntly as saying if one pound invested in the market generates nineteen pounds for the city, the city's economy, does taking thirty-three thousand pounds out of the market, which is option one, mean we're taking six hundred and twenty-seven thousand pounds, if my sums are right, out of the city's economy? Now, I don't think it does, but, you know, you can understand how, well, I don't know if it's possible to explain why it doesn't without going into the standard and rigorous methodology for calculating GVAs that we were talking about earlier. I don't know if there's a simple explanation of why that doesn't, it doesn't work like that. Clearly, if we said, let's not charge any rents and charge anything for energy, that doesn't mean the city's economy is going to balloon, it just means we'd have a bigger deficit to carry and we'd have some very, very happy market traders. Maybe I've answered the question myself, I don't know if you want to.
No, I think you're absolutely right, Joe. I mean, there is complexity in terms of those calculations, which we could run through, again, that matrix and come back with some, but we couldn't give you an off-the-cuff response in terms of the impact.
Okay.
Just going back to an earlier point as well, is obviously we've come for a recommendation today, in the tenancy agreement, as council officers, we could go for full recovery, but because we're not recommending to go for full recovery, that's why we've come for a decision from committee. And we recognise the fact that in that recommendation, we don't want to be chasing one financial objective at the detriment to another. So obviously, by going for higher recharges in energy prices, we could drive out more businesses that don't feel that it's sustainable anymore in the market space, so therefore you're actually losing rental income and service charge, so you're not actually benefiting anything. So that's why you have to sort of try and find this balance between the two.
And I think the recommendation is us finding that balance, I think is what we're saying.
Yeah, and I think we've understood that as members, and I think also actually, my understanding of the answer to Mark's other question about, does the burden fall on the traders, the fact that we're not adding the, we're not increasing the energy component of the service charge means that it doesn't, that means if traders do close down as a result of increases of any kind, that that's falling on the deficit in the position. Yeah, okay. Cliff, and then Paul.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I'm trying to get some sort of feel for how these utility charges sit with the levels of rent and service charges. You know, what is the proportion of the overall costs to the, to a typical trader?
Yeah, so that's, it varies wildly because obviously, certain traders provide different goods. Obviously, you've got the higher sort of like energy consumption traders such as cafes, butchers, fishmongers, that use a lot of cold storage, a lot of obviously gas appliances for cooking and whatnot, whereas when you, if you were to increase on the miscellaneous stalls who are basically using a light and a till, you know, they're not going to feel that as significant as some of the other traders, certainly not proportionately for how much to pay on energy costs.
So I think what you're saying, Liam, is that it varies by trader, so for some, it's a more significant element of their monthly outgoings, for others, for smaller stallholders that are just using tills and the electric lights is a much smaller proportion of the monthly outgoings, but the service charges and rents will be similar kind of across the rest of them. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right. Okay, I don't see any more hands. Sorry, Paul, yes, Paul, you had quite right, sorry, I even wrote your name down.
Thanks, Joe. I know the conversation feels like it's moved on a bit, but I just would like to ask for a clarification. On the increase in the current tariff, we charged the tenants by fifty percent, does this mean, is it fifty percent of the current cost or fifty percent of the current charge? Because the numbers don't appear to add up in my slightly addled morning rhetoric.
So it's a fifth percent increase on the current tariff that the traders pay from two thousand and fourteen, so it's not on the actual amount that we pay as the council, it's going back to the two thousand and fourteen tariff.
Can I perhaps just give you a couple of numbers to give you an example? So this is from actual quarter three billing at the more market, the electricity costs to the council were zero point two nine pence per kilowatt hour for the first thousand units and twenty-two pence per kilowatt hour for all the units after. So that's what we are getting charged and were charged for that quarter. What we're actually covering from traders, which, so this should be a direct pass-through, but we're actually going to be covering twelve pence per kilowatt hour rather than the twenty-nine pence. So what we're saying is, right, the increase in tariffs that we're proposing, so the hundred and eleven percent would take that up to twenty-five pence per kilowatt hour, the fifty percent one would take that to nineteen pence per kilowatt hour. So it gives you an idea of that sort of scale of where they currently are, what the increase in tariffs we're proposing and where the actual charges are. So whatever we proposed today is less than what they, than what we're getting charged.
Right, okay. So I'm going to leap in there because that doesn't seem to align with the proportion of the deficit is recovered by each of the options in section one point six of the paper. So I'm guessing all the rest of the energy is the energy that goes into the service charge and, yeah.
Apologies, Joe. There's also a third of the energy consumption of the markets that is the council's cost and responsibility, it's a budget set aside for that, that it can't be passed on in service charges or direct energy usage, so there is cost to the council.
Okay, so actually, yeah, so, but what that means is that by saying, you know, we raise, we take option one, we reduce the gap by thirty-three K, there's a three hundred and fifteen K gap that remains, nearly all of that is not a gap generated by what we're charging for here. There is a gap that's elsewhere, and therefore we shouldn't expect that gap to be closed by this measure.
There's a removal, so the amount the council pays out, that's already been taken out of that calculation, so the third that we're due to pay isn't included in that, in that kind of recovery figure.
Right, but the figures you just gave us, that option one would increase twelve pence to nineteen pence on tariff out of twenty-five pence or something, yeah, which is what we're paying. So that, to me, sounds like it, that closes half of the, it sounds to me like your option three, the hundred and eleven, hundred and seven percent is full cost recovery within that, you know, you're charging twenty-five pence and we're paying twenty-five pence.
We're paying twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine pence, okay, so it's pretty close to full.
There's that for the first thousand and twenty-two pence after that, so we're increasing that the tariff that we're currently covering on both those percentages. So, no, we don't get to full cost recovery, and we've already removed the amount that the council can't pass on from those figures in the paper around recovery.
Right, but what I'm saying is that's, going from twelve to twenty-five out of twenty-nine is pretty close to passing on the whole of that twenty-nine, and yet, what we're saying, what that option is described as in the paper, is we close the gap by seventy-three K, but we, there's still two hundred and seventy-five K, so it's a small amount of the gap, according to these figures in the paper, but it sounds like it's a large amount of the gap in terms of the unit price that's being passed on. So that's where the confusion, I think, is arising. I don't know if members are as confused as I am, yeah.
It's not done without a label, like, and you've been fixing quotes, the annual figures doesn't help either.
We're also having to use some forecasts and some actuals for others as well. So, you know, the forecast that's in there in terms of the annual gap is a forecast based on where we think the money will be next year in terms of the costs. The figures I've quoted there are actuals because they were, a quarter's already been and gone.
Right, well, I mean, I don't know if there are any more comments on this, as I said at the beginning.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to pick up something that councillor James said. There was a comment that said if that gap could be funded corporately, just to remind the committee that this committee can't make a decision that requires the corporate centre to fund a budget gap in the budget of this committee. So I don't know whether officers can comment on the different options and what the position would be. I know the budget does assume a certain amount of under-recovery, the council budgets to subsidise, but whether you can explain to the committee what the different decisions would mean in terms of the budget and whether these are all decisions that are actually open to this committee without the need to go to the centre.
I think in terms of, in terms of the cost recovery, where we are currently is, again, going back to Liam's figures in terms of the budget this financial year and where we are, so with the current cost recovery and the position that we're in, we've got a variance of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand pounds, of which two hundred and thirteen thousand pounds of that is the under-recovery of energy costs. So in terms of actually meeting the budget, then there needs to be a cost increase in terms of those different ones, in terms of the recommendation figures, that's going to get us closest in terms of those figures. In terms of estimating, then I can't give you exactly what those breakdown figures will be.
No, I think Sarah's question was, is the committee allowed to not raise money that it has, you know, that it doesn't have a budget not to raise, I think, to put it bluntly. And I don't know what the answer to that question is. I think I do know what the answer to that question is, but I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, yeah. So in terms of the under-recovery for those decisions, then the budgetary figure that we're recommending would definitely get us to that, and it's less sure in terms of the forecast for the fifty percent.
Okay, so I'll now say what I think the position is, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that all four options that we've been given are open to us and that it wouldn't have got through legal were they not open to us, and that the consequences of choosing options one through three is that we'll not be, you know, that we'll be underperforming against our budget and that will be a cost to the waste and the routine budget. That's my understanding of the position, if anybody wants to correct me on that, you're welcome to. I think, I've chosen a moment when legal's in discussion, so I can stand and correct it, this is my person.
Can you repeat that question, please, Chair?
My understanding is that all of the options before us are open to us, and the consequence of choosing one through three is that we'll be underperforming against our budget, which we are legally able to do, and if we hadn't been legally able to do it, then legal wouldn't have signed this paper off with the options that are in it.
That was the question I was just discussing. The question was asked as to what basis the budget is budgeted on for the purpose of the balanced budget the council has set, and my understanding is that the recommendation should allow us to balance, but that's potentially not the answer I'm getting, Chair, so. Could I possibly ask for an adjournment?
I was hoping to wrap this up. Yes, yes, I know, okay, I think we have to grant an adjournment in that case. How long do you want?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay. Can we adjourn the meeting for ten minutes, bar means stop the webcast? Hello and welcome back. Thank you for waiting. We have some legal advice to hear.
Thanks, Chair. We've just been able to go over the figures and confirm that with the exception of the do-nothing option, all of these options would be within, if all the other planning assumptions come to be true, would be within the budget of this particular business unit, because it's actually two business units. So those are options that are available to you. Obviously, the lower the recovery that you vote for, the greater the risks that if all the planning assumptions prove not to be the case, that there will be an overspend or under-recovery. But those options are, based on planning assumptions and budgeting, open to you today. Just to clarify as well, you were said about the figures in the disadvantages column and how they didn't seem to relate to the increase in the individual rate. That is the total under-recovery on fuel prices, so that does include elements that would never be recovered by this. So even if you went for the total recovery option, there would be an element of under-recovery that's not being dealt with in this paper.
Thank you, that's, yeah, I think we possibly worked out that was the case. Is there therefore a figure under the disadvantages for one point six four that is the amount that's under-recovered, under full recovery? I guess if we don't have it, we don't have it, but, I mean, clearly the indication is there is a figure there that may be similar to the other figures. Okay, okay, in that case, as I said at the beginning, I minded to support option two, the increase of fifty percent, given that the amount charged to traders at the moment is significantly below what the cost is to cancel of the energy, and that fifty percent will close a small part of that gap, I think is a reasonable compromise. I don't know if members have any other views, they want to contribute to that. Mike?
Chair, our group will vote for that proposal. I would add, though, that I do think that one of the risks that's been discounted is that the higher we increase it, the charge, there is a risk that traders would withdraw from the market because they would find their position was not economically viable. But I also think that if we have a review in six months' time, traders do know that footfall picks up in the autumn heading to Christmas, and that's the busiest time. So it gives them the opportunity to prepare and plan ahead, knowing that we may well be bringing in a further increase six months further on.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. No, I quite agree. I think it's a point that is well made, is that I know, although we've heard about risks of under-recovery with, under various options, there is no guarantee that the higher recoveries are safer options in terms of risk, and maybe the safest one is the one that's just been ruled out of doing nothing. Without a crystal ball, we can't be certain about that. Paul?
Thanks, Chair. I mean, I have a mind to agree with you that fifty percent is a good change right now at this moment in time. Just want to ask, doesn't the council pay for its energy with a fixed rate for a year or more in advance? And with that in mind, what benefits does a six-month review have when the price we're paying will be the same as it is today?
Yes, I mean, I think Ben's put his hand up to answer that. I mean, considering how long it's taken for us to work out what we were paying in twenty-one, twenty-two for energy. Yes, I mean, I, I think Ben's put his hand up to, to answer that. I mean, considering how long it's taken for us to work out what we were paying in 21, 22 for energy in order to inform this paper, the, the, the prospect of knowing in advance what we're going to pay, you know, I would hope. But, but the, the, the package is extremely complex. There was a paper that came to Stratton Resources for buying energy in the future and it was a, you know, it was a big, complex paper. I still, you know, I read it and I still don't know what we're doing. Ben?
I, I think the point of the review is, is so we get to see what the real impact is on, on traders. So we're not, we're not kind of forecasting the future, what we do and don't think we can really see what's impacted over six months of that increase before we come back with anything else around what we might want to do with energy costs in the future. So it just allows the committee to be better informed for any further decisions.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Mike and everyone said. I think the, probably the prudent thing to do and responsible thing to do is put them up 50% now, see what that what that does in six months. And if it, there's no impact to the businesses, then we can, you know, go for full recovery. Or not previous amounts, but you know, up to 107%, which was the recommendation. But it would be good to see what the impact of 50% is first. And if we see that traders are closing as a result of that, then we would, you know, think about keeping it as 50% or even get back to the previous option.
Thank you, Alexi. Yeah, I think the point is well made. So in terms of process, so we can have a, we can have a vote on that we want option one, but the recommendations are written as they are. If you could advise us exactly how we need to vote to do this.
Yeah, Chair, I think it seems as though you've made a proposal to amend recommendation one so that it's increased the current tariff charge to tenants by 50%. Councillor Chaplin was the first one to come in and say he'd be happy to agree with that. So I don't know whether he's prepared to second that motion. So officially you would vote on that amendment first and then you would vote on the, the three together with that amended proposal in as, as the, the first recommendation.
Okay, okay, yeah. So thank you for that. So
On behalf of our group, I'm happy to second that.
Okay, thank you. So I will, is that, is that amendment to the, to the first recommendation to make it 50% on both fuels, is that agreed? I will take silence as the assent of the meeting. That is agreed. And so the decision on the amended recommendations, again, I'll take silence as the assent of the meetings, that agreed. And that is agreed. Okay, thank you very much. That concludes the business for today. Thank you at home for, for staying with us through, through the drama and the interruptions and the lessons about veganism. This brings this, this, this cycle of meetings for the Waste and Streeting Committee to an end. There will be a new committee either of Waste and Streeting or of something else after the elections. I hope, I hope to be with you then, you never know. Thank you. Take care now. Bye bye.